Okay, we're gonna get started here in five, four, three, two. Good evening, Canby. Welcome to the City Council Joint Work Session. We're joined here by the Canby Utility Board, and we're gonna be discussing the new water treatment plan discussion. So with that introduction, we're gonna forego the formalities of the invitation and pledge for the regular meeting at seven. Mayor Haskins is on his way, and Councilor Banks, Councilor Alton, our editor of the conference this evening. Councilor Banks is at conferences. So we are the group of evening. Who is actually reading this? That's Michelle Babel, I didn't hear. We'll turn it over to Carol and I mean, maybe. Would you like to do that? Yeah, let's start with Carol. Let's just tell everybody who you are and your.
I am here at the General Manager for Canby Utility. My name is David Horex.
I'm the Canby Utility Board. Dan Stern, I'm the City Council.
Tom Lafferty, Canby Utility Board.
Tracy Hensley, City Council President.
Jake Hill, Canby Utility Board.
James Madden, a council member and liaison to the Canby Utility Board.
Jack Gittler, Canby Utility Board.
Jim Deterse, City Council.
Ruby Bakke, with Consor.
Brian Ginter, with Consor.
Here.
Rod Gittler, Brad.
Justin Wilson, Canby's lead.
How about that?
Scott Sassen.
Susan, Susan Extermer. Start with CJ, can go that way.
Uh, CJ Leeson, Canby's city recorder.
Maya Benham, city recorder.
Jamie Stickle, Director of Economic Development.
Spencer, with Canby Public Works.
Jerry Nelson, City Canby Public Works Director.
Ryan Potter, City of Canby Planning Manager.
Don Hardy, Canby Planning Director.
Todd Wood, Transit Fleet Director.
Katie Joyner, City of Canby Financial Analyst.
Heidi Mueller, City of Canby Transit Coordinator.
Ryan Moshin, Canby Water, and Canby Water Plant. My Green, Canby Water.
All right, we have here some of that, um, like, deck on our roadmap, and we have Brian Ginter, his Consor, who also works at the Plan. Um, he has worked with Canby Utility for many years, longer than I have. 13, 15? Could it be himself? Exactly. Know about Canby Utility. Um, and is a regional expert in water system planning and hydraulic management. And Ruby Bakke is also the Consor, and she leads their training communications team, and worked on many of the region's water supply and treatment plant targets. We were involved with the Aron Ross Public Land Water Supply Project. So what she's done is knowledge of, um, land water supply. And that is, um, where our water right is, and if you guys want to start your presentation? Yes? We have. If there's any questions, feel free to ask them along with the slides. You can put in your.
We're gonna get.
We're gonna get there. While we're waiting, I don't need to decline, I need to go over the agenda tonight, which is, we're gonna talk a little bit about the history of Canby Utility Water Supply, development and planning. Um, we're gonna talk about water system recommendation, capital improvements that are needed. We spend some time looking at the water supply alternative analysis that was conducted and that's where we already made. Um, and then more information about the Willamette Water Supply System and Treatment Plan, and where we're headed, um, where we're headed next step. And then there's time on the agenda, and there's time for questions and discussions. Councilor President, are we open to people asking questions as we go through the presentation? Or would we? That's up to you, if you'd rather take it at the end, or if you want us to go? As we go, um, we've got. Okay. As we go, there. All of your time. So I could start also, I'll just move through the presentation a little bit, um, about Canby's water, um, system. Another source of their water inherently is the Malala River. And the water treatment plant is operated and maintained by the owner of the water, the manager. Here tonight with us is the eighty million a day treatment plant. And there's, we have three main water storage tanks that have about four point four million gallons. A pump station, and sixty-six miles of underground pipe that are from four to sixteen inches in diameter. Oh, it's my slide. Me. Oh, it's you. Okay, I thought it was mine. But that's what your system looks like. But what I like to think about a water system is what it does for the community. So water systems provide safe drinking water, so they protect public health, they drive economy and jobs. And also, sometimes we forget about it, but that's what we use to put out fires. So fire, ours is. I went back and looked at the history of Canby's water system, and I was quite amazed about the excellent history the community has of looking into the future and reinvesting in reliable water supply. So almost, almost exactly a hundred years ago, you're on a groundwater system, when that was not the groundwater system here in this area, it's not very good. You moved to Springs on the Malala River. When that capacity ran out, you moved to the Malala River, the surface water source. And here we are in 2023, a hundred years later, and you're once again looking at the next source of water for the community.
Just as you've had that long history with planning for those changes, the planning for your next incremental water supply, the long process as well, started back in nineteen ninety with the national engine flow water rate on the Willamette River. Through the nineties and early two thousands, there were a number of small studies that were done to look at how that could be developed. In two thousand and ten, you did a water master plan update that started focusing on when would you need to develop that source? That carried over into a water supply analysis in twenty thirteen, making sure that that was the right decision. There were other options potentially out there, looking at, is it really the right thing for the community? In twenty eighteen, it was a further exploration of regional partnership opportunities, making sure that with other development happening online, or whether there wasn't an opportunity to actually join with other partners. Development of a bunch of documents like the Water Management Conservation Plan and the update of the master plan, all part of an ongoing planning process that continuously looks at, how do you make sure that you have reliable water for the long term? And going forward, that's gonna be a continuation, another update of the WMTP, all working towards development of that needed water supply source between. Why do you need additional water? Well, as the community continues to grow, you're gonna exceed the capacity of your existing Malala River source. And so what we show there is the blue bars up and down are the capacity of the system plant. The purple line on top is what matters, that's your maximum bay of demand, that's what you need to plant for in the source. We're showing that by around twenty thirty-five, somewhere in that range, you're going to exceed the capacity of all of the sources in the day. And there's really limited opportunities for this to happen. It's limited by the flow in the river and the water available in the summertime. Unfortunately, we use the most water at the same time when the river's flowing the least amount of water, and so we kind of need some limitation. So we've got that need going forward. So the water supply analysis hit on some key items. One, that again, a new source is needed within roughly ten years to meet community's growing water needs. There's really limited opportunities for partnerships. If we explore those, you don't have any neighbors of water available. The partnership opportunities largely have passed, given the timing and distance, it didn't make a lot of sense. And we're, your expansion of the Malala is challenging because there is a capacity. And as people are aware, in the summertime, the water quality is challenging. So you get, you get the same quality of water that you want to have going forward. So really, our recommendation was to proceed with developing the Willamette River at that point of diversion that was identified in the water right. And really, that expanded supply, well, helping the community long-term needs, both existing urban growth boundary and thinking about long-term, as the city continues to grow beyond its current limits, as you think about urban growth boundary expansions, having a reliable supply with long-term needs. So this big picture in the master plan, this map showing in red all the improvements that are needed, red is our color that we use to show where you're gonna have to spend money. And I think the takeaway here is that there's not rain or threat on this map compared to what most communities see. So you really are, you have a well-managed system that lacks existing deficiencies. You don't have problems that you need to fix, you just need to be planning for the future. So down on the lower part of the map, here, the D six, seven, those represent kind of existing deficiencies. Most systems, there's a whole bunch of that. The upper right area is largely expansion within urban growth boundaries, so those are the development-driven improvements that are needed. The rest of it is all related to source. And so really, what we're saying here is that your primary investment going forward in the next twenty years is going to be in that source development. You don't have to address a bunch of deficiencies in the past. You don't have a need for a lot of capacity improvements throughout the city, but you do need to make source improvements. So dollars is kind of what it all comes down to. And so this is the early planning estimates that we have. And we'll talk more about the things that go into developing these estimates and the uncertainty, but the biggest project is that source development involved with the number is around B to ninety million. I'm gonna say it's in that range of dollars, right now in twenty twenty-three dollars. And understand that cost estimates, or cost estimates at this point, the project definition is small. And you've all experienced with inflation, I think there's some variability there, so that'll keep you fine. But that is your big project. Beyond that, there are some storage improvements, some other pipeline improvements, so we're really focused on that big piece, because that is your big project. The good news is you don't have a bunch of other things you're addressing at the same time. You could focus on the one big challenge you look for. But how do we get to the Willamette? We look primarily at three different alternatives. We looked at the Clackamas River, partnering with the South Fork Water Board, that's the supplier for the city's award in the city and West Lynn. And the challenge there really is distance, significant amount of pipeline. They aren't really interested in partnership, they have water rights, so they need to solve additional source treatment capacity, intake capacity, so a lot of the same things we're talking about here at the city, and it's a very tight line. So it really didn't make sense from the dollars and cents standpoint. We looked at the Willamette River in Wilsonville, where they developed the water treatment plant. Closer, but again, challenging, challenging opportunities there. Most of the water rates there are already spoken for. The intake capacity that they've developed, I mean, weren't really interested in broader partnerships, you know, the things that they already developed in Washington County. Just quickly, I'll hit on groundwater as well, if it's always a question. If you had groundwater before, we did evaluate groundwater a number of times. Generally, in the valley here, groundwater development is pretty challenging, limited capacity for water quality. So it really doesn't have the potential to meet the community's long-term needs. So we landed on, what was started back in the nineties was the right path. Continuing to develop the Willamette here in the community is really the best decision going forward. Some of those reasons are the fact that it's available and reliable supply, you have ownership, it's the shortest amount of pipeline infrastructure that's needed, the costs are lower, and you can do it within a little time. Those were all part of the water supply analysis that we did in twenty thirteen, and we continued to firm along the way with new planning, and that still is the right approach.
So the Willamette River is one of Oregon, northwest Oregon's most important rivers, and I also think it's very interesting. So it originates in the mountains south of Eugene. And it's the largest river in the United States, flows south to north. And I want to say that that's really interesting, because the public, when you build a treatment plant on the Willamette, they're always confused where the water's coming from. So one of the challenges is people think the water's coming from the Columbia and going down to Eugene. We always say it was going down to Eugene, so they're worried about the superfluent site. The water flows the other way. That's not an issue at all. It flows entirely, a hundred eighty-seven miles flows entirely within Oregon, so we don't have cross-state jurisdictional issues. It's completely managed by Oregon and Oregon agencies and water right holder. Compared to the Malala, the Willamette has thirteen dams that store water for flood. So in the summer, there's a lot of storage there that ends up in the Willamette, and it's a much more reliable source. And you can see how many communities are using the Willamette. There's Springfield, Corvallis, Wilsonville, Sherwood, and very soon, the Willamette Water Supply Program, Phil's Row, Bieber's Inn, and Falls of the Water, which will just about two hundred fifty thousand people who will be on the Willamette very soon. The other thing we know about the Willamette River is that treatment does work. And one of the points that we point to is the Willamette Water Treatment Plant in Wilsonville. It's been in service for twenty-two years, and it's met and exceeded all drinking water quality standards. We did, we've run focus groups with customers in Wilsonville before, asking them about what they thought about the Willamette River. And while they'll say they think the Willamette isn't clean, they absolutely love this water treatment plant. They say that they have the best water in the world, that's in our treatment plant. So we have learned that treatment works, and also why people trust it. And the water industry has a standard that involves multi-barrier protection. So a treatment plant isn't just filtering it once and sending it out to customers. There's multiple steps across this top here. You can see there's seven steps that are, each of them doing something unique to make the water clean. So clarification, ozonation, granular activated carbon, all the way through to fluorination. And I have to stand up here too, sorry. You can see on the left hand, the things that each one of those steps are taking up, the acidity, pathogen, organic. And I think important here is pace and order and algae. So there's, you can see if you follow the pace and order across the chart, you can see step three and step four both remove things in order. Algae's remove three different, three different kinds. So the multi-barrier approach ensures that drinking water is safe that you can tap.
Good question.
Yeah.
Real quick, we just, three of the taste, Canby, one, that, that, some that are hurt plant doesn't move right? We can't even tell. I'm sure it's weird. Brian, if you could as well start right on the, on the, that existing plant is designed as a series of smaller packaged plants that have, don't have necessarily the same multi-barrier approach. So they aren't really designed to address a lot of different capacities and ability to go in using water at the same time. So this is challenging. Brian, if you could do a lot of, some parts of that.
Yeah, we don't have the ozonation or granular activated carbon, there are pieces moving the, not always formal, and the chiasin that helps the case of energy from the algae that we have there. For the last three years up in, uh, Virginia, and so we've had more water in the river than not the year before that. And so we didn't have to take out. And the Canby Utility Board, wishing for a study on. So this, that, that we want. So the ability to work. To, uh, place.
So, I know, and that doesn't do that, but we're going to do the new water plant. Would. This is, this is, this is. It's an order, it's in the Willamette.
Brian, she said. The idea was clever that maybe some filters might work, but you're not sure, so you've done somewhere else, try it. Not much.
It was in the case of murder study, and it's gonna cost many millions of dollars, and it may work. That they weren't sure if, there's not enough space in the back of the treatment plant, we not, we can't put enough activated carbon contacters fully move. But the decision for that time was that they have to.
So looking forward, what, what happens in the first step, the first milestone, really sets the foundation for the success of the, the rest of the project. And I'm gonna talk a little bit more, it's small up here on the screen, but what, how these first steps really become critical for reducing future risks. So spending time getting your ducks in the row, going slow to go bath, all of these things happen in this first phase because all of these things, site selection, land use planning, environmental permitting, water rights, facilities planning, funding, community engagement, are all related to each other. And what I think about is, what happens if you just select a site? And you're not thinking about all these other things. You select a site, you hire some engineers, you study a, a treatment plant there, and then you go to the land use, you try, you try and get a land use permit, or you try and do environmental, you really been, um, you, you're really set yourself up. What if those things don't work out? You have to go all the way back. So the, the way to do this is, as part of you do site selection, you learn about the land use requirements for each of the sites you're looking at, understand what the environmental permitting rules are, make sure it's not impacting your water rights. You start your facility planning, so you know your, your plant is actually fit on the site and function. And funding strategy is very important. Brian went over the budget, I know that it's on all of your minds. So this is all for the time when you're putting your funding strategy together, so you're not getting to the end and trying to figure out how to. On the site selection, I, it's really important that you look at multiple sites. And you might have a site that looks really good, but you don't know the geology, and you don't understand how the community feels about it. And it's just very important that we keep our minds open. I always think it's reconnaissance and research and understanding and talking with community members and understanding community values. So when you come out of the first phase, you're in a good position to go on to the technical, more technical piece. So I was gonna talk about two of the important steps. One is why to have a communication strategy. And the picture here on the bottom of the screen is from Eugene Water and Electric Board, it's nineteen twenty-seven. And it's the year that they went to the McKinsey Water. And the picture is of a parade. And so this is a pipe. This is a piece of the pipe that they're gonna put in the ground to bring McKinsey drinking water. It's the, and it's celebrated, it has flowers on it, it's on a float, it says, this pipe will supply a hundred thousand people with pure McKinsey River water. And I, when I think about communicating with the public, it's this kind of excitement I feel. Like, a water source that's gonna be available for your community for a hundred years, that, it should be in a place. So it's kind of my feeling slide here. And for you two, this is a legacy investment, that's vital for the long-term visibility of the community. But along with this, it's also these challenges for water supply programs in Oregon. It takes about ten years to build a new treatment plant, get the supply and all the permitting. It's, it's high stakes, there's, you have time pressure, lots of stakeholders, it's a large investment, permitting. So it's, all of that needs to be managed. And communication really can help a lot with all of those challenges. Now, how do we build community support? And I think there's a list of things here, but I believe that understanding the community, understanding community needs, their perspectives and their interests, incorporating community values into your planning and your design is really key. Keeping policymakers informed, you know, people who have to make the hard decisions about spending money and moving forward with each project, you really have to be informed and, and able to communicate with the public what the benefits of the project are, maximizing partnerships and shared benefits with your stakeholders. So I think this is a real opportunity to not just build a water treatment plant, but to have other community benefits aligned, you know, how can we align other community benefits with this? And of course, be the best source of information. So that means to have to keep communicating with the public, so that what they're hearing is from the people who are working, working on it. Because I always think, if you're not talking about it, somebody else will be. And finally, the other important thing that I know with great interest is funding sources. And what I'd like to say about this slide, there's a lot of information on it, I know, but funding strategies are always built with multiple sources of funding. So it won't just be one way that you're saying with it. So on these water supply programs, legacy investments, there's cash, revenue bonds, drinking water state revolving funds, squithia, they get, they get put together, all with the goal of keeping rates. You'll have to raise rates, but the goal is to have it be a slow, steady rate increase over time. So that community, your community members aren't not as impacted as if, you know, you have to raise rates a hundred percent, you know, at one time. So putting these different sources of funds together allows you to have strategy like that in it. And across the top are the different types of funding that's available to you. On the left column, you can see whether it's competitive, what the funding cycle is. But the key, keeping rates increased slowly and steady over many years, is how much funding can you get from that source? What's the interest rate? What are the repayment terms? You know, is there loan forgiveness? You can see some of these have loan forgiveness options. So that's another thing we do upfront, is we look at all these funding sources, we come up with a plan. And not on here, there's also federal grants that come up. You never stop looking for money. Every million dollars, five hundred thousand dollars, it's helpful. And finally, um, Canby Utility revenue streams are water rates and system development charges. So everybody who's using the water is paying for it. It does not come from partnership. Often, people don't, don't know that, that it's paid for by. And that's, I think, that's the end of our, our. Any questions?
Quick question. The capacity of the Willamette. I know that Wallop can put in a certain size of pipe, as well as Sherwood, all the way over to Sherwood. And has anybody done a study to actually look at the capacity of the Willamette?
There's, there's been a number of studies done, and actually, that's one of those early steps is to determine. So the river generally has adequate capacity, but there are limitations, primarily for fish flows in the summer when flows are low. There's two ways to mitigate that. One is the use of the utilities, the Malala River right. So because this point of diversion is downstream of that, there's the ability to transfer that paper water downstream and have it available in the Willamette, even when there's limitations on flows in the river. And the other piece that I think, two other pieces actually, where their kind of long-term interests are, there are the ability to acquire non-needs for rights that are, aren't being used anymore, transfer those down and have that to increase the capacity. And the third is that because there's thirteen dams on the river system, there's stored water that potentially can be available for the use in the future. Today, there's not a mechanism for that, but that's been something that's been worked on by both agriculturally interested and municipal interested state for a long time. So there's kind of a combination of strategies to mitigate for that. So there's plenty of water flowing in the river. It's a matter of what's. So, there's plenty of water flowing in the river, it's a matter of what's available, and there's some mechanisms to get access to that water and ensure that it's going to be available. That is a key piece early on, is to make sure that before making this major investment, the water's available year-round, now and into the future ahead of other interests.
Just to clarify, this new plant is supposed to be replaced, the water river, or is it meant to be supplemented?
I mean, the water river, sorry.
Is it going to supplement or is it replaced?
I'll answer with yes. It's not quite that simple, but initially, it's primarily replaced. Ultimately, I think there's a decision to be made about whether or not we need new treatment plants, what the cost is in terms of capital investment on the water, you take the water treatment plant versus just expanding this plant to take the capacity from both of those sources. That's going to be another one of those early decisions, is how the fate fits in in terms of what's the ultimate capacity of the water river treatment plant and what's the ultimate fate of the water source. Because of the age and condition of the treatment plant on the water, it will need to be abandoned eventually or a major retrofit is needed. So, it's kind of a trade-off in terms of cost, but it will be assessed in a couple of days.
Population issue, is that, or maybe considering is that, using that thing in a market to calculate how quickly we can reach that level of water and manage it, and manage to actually be the city planning partner. Was that, because of that question of, you know, recession, kind of slows down, population rate, is that, is that data, that data among states in 10 years?
Sure. So, we use the Portland State University Population Research Center's estimates, so they're the designated authority for developing population forecasts in the state. They use a number of things, historical growth rates looking forward, potential growth rates, births, deaths, people moving into the area. I would say that they've been pretty reliable, and we tend to be conservative. So, I guess what I'd say is that what we're looking at is, I think that population growth rate, barring some major change, represents a conservative, an appropriately conservative rate of growth. And so, when we look at it, a treatment plant resource that you need has to be online before you hit that need. And so, what we're forecasting is that we're ahead of it enough, that we're not putting the community at risk, but not so far ahead that you're making a investment that really shouldn't reach out to a generation.
One of the big things that obviously has come down to is the money. And I think it's all but determined that the hack pieces are on, that's put forward for the community to fund this. And I know that there's been some talk, I believe there's been some talk of coordinating with Canby Utility and other funding agencies within the city to kind of cover the plan for how that will work, so that the school board at the city or the school board at Canby Utility, we don't all go to, all have it on one ballot. And so, I think that is something that we really need to put in more front of this process, is getting all those other agencies on board, like fire district and such, to say, this is really a key thing. And so, how can we bait this funding mechanism in without overwhelming or overburdening?
Well, one, one thing, and I, again, I don't, I don't know Canby, the city of Canby very well yet, but revenue bonds in Oregon do not have to go through a vote. So, because water user fees are being, a revenue bond is paid back by water user fees and system development charges and such, but it's something that's allowable. Some cities have things in their city charter that they can't take on debt without a city vote. So, I'm not, I'm not sure exactly here, but most, probably the majority of utilities that we work with do revenue bonds.
Well, I think there is language in our charter surrounding the water, and what Canby can, and it cannot be coming sources. And if that is the case, I have brought this up, that we really need to back open the city charter and look at that sort of stuff. And I know that is on the kind of goals, uh, goals, the long-term goal. And I would say that if we go into our new goal setting later, you know, this year or this coming year, if that is a hindrance to offering, offering Canby Utility the ability to source some of these funds, or do I have to set up a priority?
Yeah, I was, oh, you got some notes. Karen Thompson. One of the questions that people put on the board that I think, once out or laid out a word, clearly that the water department, that we operate, so with regard to who has the authority, shouldn't have the authority to engage in contact of all those other kinds of things, other than laws, which is there, that it comes from. And I think while, Carol has thought about that, brings us to a thought about how that should work. So, it is representative, is representative of, 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 so, it, that, uh, it, it, it is representative of five, that one, that, that, no, that, maybe we, can you hear me and can you respond off that?
Eileen, was that a question from me? I can barely, I can barely hear you, maybe just a little bit louder, please.
Do you want to comment on the need to avoid that? And that was part of the question, yeah, part of the question. But with the, who would issue that for the Portland project?
Sure, yeah, happy to. So, first of all, I, I'm not sure how many of you, I think most of you do, maybe, you know, a handful certainly probably are newer and aren't familiar. I'm David Doofman with the firm Barry Elsner and Hammond, and we have worked with Canby, particularly the Canby Utility Board for many, many years. My, the Hammond and Barry Elsner and Hammond was a guy named Jack Hammond, who has been, you know, actually passed away recently, but was a longtime counsel for Canby Utility. And currently, we are also serving as the interim city attorney for Canby. And so, one of the things that, you know, we wanted to be sure that the, you know, all the stakeholders here and everybody involved, we realized is, we recognize that, you know, there, maybe that sounds a little strange, how could you be representing both parties? And I can go and drill down on this as much as you'd like tonight, but I'll try to keep it at a, at a more digestible level. You know, for us, we, we, we think of really the, the utility board as being really a part of the city, and, you know, it all comes from the charter, as was mentioned earlier, there's some language that's very specific. It has, the Canby Utility Board has a lot of autonomy based on how the charter is written. And so, we've always sort of treated it as, as two separate entities, if you will. But, you know, at the end of the day, we think if that were an issue that came up, you know, it's more likely than not that a reviewing body would say, really, they're, you know, it's, it's one entity, and the utility board is a, is just a, a part of the city that has a lot of autonomy. But, that is it may, we've been, you know, with respect to this issue, I know that there's been questions about the debt and who would issue it. And so, I just want everybody to be sure that they, they recognize that to the extent there was a, you know, a disagreement about this in the future, where we felt we couldn't, you know, represent, we'll call it, you know, both the utility board's interests in the cities, because right now we see those as the same thing, we would, you know, recommend that, you know, we have, get you separate, both parties, separate, separate lawyers. But I really don't think that's going to be, be an issue. As far as the, the debt goes, it was said earlier about revenue bonds being something that could be issued without a, you know, going out for a vote, and that is true. And the charter specifically speaks to Canby Utility having that ability to issue revenue bonds. But cannot issue general obligation bonds. That would be something that would have to essentially go through the council. And we still want to kind of look at this piece a little bit more, because, you know, historically, Canby Utilities had very little to know debt. So, this would be kind of a new issue. And, you know, just be sure that the amount, if in fact the city of Canby were to issue a general obligation debt and get that approved, voters approve that, that it's, it's set up such that, that there would be, I think, what I'd call pass-through, or the ability for the utility board to essentially pay that off. You know, it could be structured in a number of ways, obviously, but that's kind of how we've looked at it, and we're going to be getting an opinion to both Carol and Eileen, and obviously to the, to the governing bodies as well about how that, how we see that working specifically. I'm sorry, if that was to me, I was having a hard time hearing that, that piece.
All right, Eileen was just reading from the charter.
Okay, great, thank you.
I forgot to mention that, it was mentioned that that is our speaker, that is our microphone up there, and so if you, you may need to speak up.
Yeah, and I can, I can hear Jason perfectly, so if, that's the, that's the tone that, that we need, but that, that works great.
Can you guys speak a little bit more about such a urgency for building, building water treatment plant? We've had a slide, kind of breezed over this, there's a lot of some, um, long construction going, have it online, what's being, why, and, okay, what milestones might we really want to think about for this? Want to give the early ones?
So, yeah, I mean, a project like this, as Lippy said, typically takes about 10 years. And so, if we back up from the beginning, if we believe that we're going to need the water between 2030, 2035, so it's huge, 2033, it's easier 10 years from now, ideally you have the plant online and operating, or you need it. If you do not, the consequence is, in the summertime, you will not have enough water to use, which means your payments potentially, in a worst case, if you are a long ways away, you need building work, plus more than that, before they build the plant. So, where there's serious risks, you don't have enough water. And it's really important. Constructing a treatment plant like this, just the construction alone is a multi-year project, likely two, three years minimum, maybe six months or so of startup, so you're, you're three-plus years in, at the end, you can start moving there until you've gotten to a bunch of other milestones. So, you go back from there, you ideally don't design at risk, so when your, as your years start doing design work, you want to have checked the box on all those other fatal flaws, things that could risk a project, so that the design work isn't an investment that's lost. So, a design for a project like this can be a eight, two-year process. Now you're at five years, those are the easy things to fix. The first five years, getting there, can be a whole bunch of pieces. It's that funding strategy, you've got to start that, communication strategy, a land use process can take a long time, it's a lot of risk with that, but the biggest one is the environmental permitting. So, anytime you're going to go put a straw in the river, take water out, there's a long drawn-out process for that. You've got to go through a number of state agencies, we have slide four that had a list of all of them, there's four or five state agencies, and the equal number of federal agencies processes you've got to go through to get from there. If you do it right, you do that step first, you check all those boxes before you start the plan. So, you can go faster, you can compress it, but then you can work at risk. And so, that 10-year timeline is all about keeping your dollars safe, not putting them at risk all along the way.
And as your slowest move is nearly fast.
Yes. Yeah, I think that's a big part of communication, is presenting it to the model, it's 10 years on, it's a long time. It doesn't, I don't give urgency for your 10 years.
Yeah, it doesn't, it seems like a long time, so we look back and you're like, I'm on the ground. It doesn't seem like it. And you're right, it sounds like a really long time, but in this work, it's fast. I think it's important to, to bring to the attention that on the first step, before they don't, like, Carol, you were up for, and R and P for an older draft, it's moving a lot of the, absolutely very important, please.
Can I ask a, just a, maybe a dumb question, but, but if the city of Canby's going to grow, it's going to probably grow on land, it's already farm land. And that farm, you're forming water on farm already, my understanding that, you're making some controversy, but it's saying often the farm land gives more water than the residential area. But that water that the farms are going to have to come from Southern America. And so, where is that water that the farms are coming in, and why don't we get that water that the farms are using directly?
So, you, you're right, it's just kind of a. You're absolutely correct, agricultural use almost always exceeds by number of magnitude that you use. So, the big challenge is that most of that agricultural use in the water valley is shallow groundwater wells. And so, the water quality that they require is different, their use of water is over a fixed season, and so those two things are, have barriers to that. So, there would be water rights that would come with levels, people would water, but the actual structure of the water from the ground probably won't be that water when you need it, after passing necessarily. So, what it ends up being is, will be a reduction in demand on the groundwater resources, which does then, really a different source of water for you, not still.
So, that one, and, do you have a question? You have your finger. Okay, sounds good.
Um, I think one thing, and correct me if I'm wrong, that might help expedite this process, or at least help smooth out one wrinkle, is that the land where the plant is going to be built, and essentially the land that might go through are essentially already under city control, they're under Canby Utility control and city control, so as far as trying to get land use from private individuals and such, that, that isn't going to be as big of a stumbling block as maybe other plant constructions have. So, I mean, if I can add just a tiny silver lining to the cloud, I think that might be, that might be at least one of them.
I would like to just.
Am I wrong? You can say, Jason, you're totally wrong.
No, I would just say back to why that first step is so important, because that's one of the things that we'll look into in the, that, that the, the sites work and the geology, and they, uh, I was thinking of it like, keep our minds open, but yeah, I think the good place to be starting.
Some of us have sort of, I don't, but, I'll, this idea is, I've got a box coming up in mind, but right now, reading through this last slide, and potentially, we have a property on Fort and Fur that's idle right now, if I read this correctly. And, and once this is done, we have a property that might be idle, do we have any way of might be idle, uh, do we have any way of selling that or building that to pay the cost of this plant because of, right, I, when I read that, I'm like, we have a this property that's idle for, for years. Some of that, for that, for that to use is funded, and that's just a question I, I don't probably have to pay that.
Good question, but we haven't answered that question.
I would say that the fourth, we were saying, uh, going forward does not have direct value to, to, as a functional operating site, so it does have the potential for, uh, repurposing in some way, which is really good, um, some of it, I think that the treatment plant site is a little more hesitant to be known, just I think there's about value of being due at second treatment plant where the value is in supply, so potentially that property also has some value, but if there's further analysis to be done to make sure that there isn't going to be a continuation of some form of treatment or use assigned.
One more quick question about the population. Um, so I think we have about 8,500 users, 231, maybe they, they, they're, from the number of us, 8,500 users. They're very, not called hardly a dollar, for no one, but say, 1.3. Give some sort of sense of scale, is that people talk to you? That's a, I don't know, the people think about that number I do, I think a lot, it's a lot of unperceptible people. And I'm just curious if you guys have a sense of scale for those individuals wanting to, is it, is it similar sort of scale or do you buy it? Or is it, uh, is it usually large private or set as small?
Yeah, I would say it's becoming a typical size project for the new size, um, and they are challenging, it is a big stretch, but we're seeing this, throughout the Northwest, that a lot of communities your size are facing similar sized projects. The Wilsonville Plant at the time was a 15 million dollar big plant for a city that was, at the time, probably fairly close to the size that it is now, so, cost of infrastructure is a lot more than it was then, but I would say that it's comparable in terms of scale.
Canby's a long. Full run, that's a little, yes.
Everything, yeah.
I would like to, um, I probably should have mentioned this when we're looking at the, um, um, the money strategy, the, is that one of the good things about using revenue bonds or with, um, loans from the state or the feds, is that the repayment terms are, um, 30 years, 35, um, the federal WPI program, you can carry a loan out for 42 years, so it's not everybody who here today spending lovely, you know, millions of dollars, people who are going to benefit from the treatment plan in the future are also paying for it. That is.
That is a good part of it. See, now, you do it paper.
Just a couple more minutes, Jerry, last questions. Position point, tax, information, so that more of a. Thank you. Thank you for coming, and bringing this stuff to us, and thank you for your presentation. Oh, great. And do please partner with the patient's strategy, Carol and Eileen are communicating.
Motion's been made by Councilor Davis and seconded by Councilor Patton to adopt ordinance one six one three, an ordinance authorizing the interim city administrator to execute a contract with Jarrett Walker and Associates in the amount of one hundred ninety-nine thousand eight hundred nine dollars to provide an update to the transit master plan. Roll call vote, please.
Councilor Patton?
Aye.
Councilor Davis?
Aye.
Councilor Sterns?
Aye.
Council President Hensley?
Aye. Passes four zero. Next item on the agenda is a new item. We're going to consider ordinance number one six one four. Eileen, are you presenting this or is Jerry?
Todd will present this item. Yes.
Sorry, I was looking ahead or looking behind him. This is a transit thing, not a public works thing. Hi, Todd.
Hello. Todd Wood, Transit Fleet Director. So, as many of you are probably aware, the Transit Department has rented a facility since 2016 when City Hall went away and Cub went away, Transit went away. It went over to a strip mall over there by Wilco. And the idea was that we would be there for, I think the lease was five years, and at that time we'd get into our own building. That didn't quite work out because here we are, 2023, still renting that space. Property was located in 2019 and purchased. It's right behind that building in Hazeldale Way. It's about 2.2 acres and it was purchased from Pioneer Pump. We own that property. We paved a part of it and we park our buses there. But that's all we have there is just a parking lot with some buses and a hose and a couple of sheds. And that's our, that's our transit facilities. In 2020, when I started, we did a study at that time, and that was about the time that the trade was happening between Cub and the city for the five acres and the shop, to see if it was better to locate the transit property over there. And it was determined, no, the 2.2 acres we have on Hazeldale is the best place for this. Unfortunately, you know, COVID put everything to a halt, and so we weren't able to move forward at the time. And there were a lot of changes in the city as well. So, when Eileen came on, I said, please, 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 can I move this forward? And she said, go ahead. So, we went out for RFQ. We got a list of qualified engineering and architectural firms. From that list, we picked the top three. We sent out an RFP to the top three. We got three bids back. All, two of the bids were around 500,000. One was around 400,000. The team that did the scoring on that felt like the 400,000 had missed the mark a bit. They were estimating they could build that entire building for less than $3 million. And nobody else, including the city engineer, thought that was reasonable. And so, we, the team scored everything and they picked Waterleaf Architecture as the top scoring group. I met with the head of Waterleaf Architecture and I talked to him about the proposal. And I said, the one thing I don't want to do is go back to the council in a year and say, we need a little more money. So, can you make sure your numbers are, you know, fairly accurate? This is a do not exceed number. So, I want to make sure that's clear. We're not necessarily going to spend all that. It is a lot of money. What this is not, is this is not the money to build the building. This is the money to design the, do all the architectural work, do all the engineering work, do all the permitting work, develop the RFP for the construction, and then help manage the construction throughout the process to get the building built. So, once we go through the RFP, we'll have to come back here and say, well, here's, you know, another $4 million RFP to build this building. Right now, the Transit Department has, I have to sit down with Eric and go through his numbers. I have, I know for sure $2 million. Eric thinks I may actually have $3 million in cash. So, this $579,000, I already have. It's already sitting in the bank earning interest. It's been sitting in the bank earning interest for a number of years now. So, this isn't coming from anywhere but already existing funds that we have stored. So, then we have another two or so million left. So, we'll probably have to figure out where the other remaining amount comes from. I don't know how much that remaining amount is. So, until we get the full design and they can sit down and say, this is how much it costs, then we'll say, this is how much more we need. And then we can talk about whether we go federal funds, bonds, or whatever to try to get the remaining amount of money. It's nowhere near $95 million, so it's not so bad.
That's fair.
Watch what you're saying. Be careful. Be careful.
Anyway, questions?
Questions from the council for Todd. Anything? I think you must have answered all the questions in your presentation. Nice job, Todd. Thank you. I will take a motion and we can discuss if you have anything to discuss.
Council President Hensley, I move to adopt ordinance number sixteen fourteen, an ordinance authorizing the interim city administrator to execute a contract with Waterleaf Architecture Incorporated of Portland, Oregon, to provide architectural and engineering services to design and build new Canby area transit facilities, to a second reading on November first, 2023.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made by Councilor Patton, seconded by Councilor Davis, to adopt ordinance number one six one four, an ordinance authorizing the interim city administrator to execute a contract with Waterleaf Architecture Incorporated of Portland, Oregon, to provide architectural and engineering services to design and build the new Canby area transit facilities. Second reading, November one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes four zero.
Thank you.
We're getting you one step closer.
Thank you, Todd. All right. Now, we have a couple of resolutions to consider. First one being thirteen ninety-six regarding the swim club.
So, Eric Leighton is here to discuss this. This is the renewal of an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Canby and the Canby Swim Club.
Eric Leighton, Canby Swim Center Aquatic Manager. And basically, it's renewing a contract, basically, for five years between the Canby Swim Club and the Canby Swim Center and the city of Canby. Very little changes. The only major change we did is cost for lifeguards during swim meets. We made it from thirteen to eighteen to cover the cost of the lifeguards because it was, it was too low. But other than wise, we left it the same.
Okay. I did notice that it's repealing three resolutions. Did we not repeal the resolutions in the past when we've renewed this? It seems like when we repeal one, it's just the previous one. But I noticed there's three numbers here. Have we been forgetting to repeal the old resolutions? Or why we have three here this time? Just curious. It's not a huge deal. It was just kind of caught me funny. I'm, I'm not exactly sure. I will let David weigh in if he has any information with that.
I do not. No, I'm not, I'm not sure. You know, obviously, the history there, it just isn't there for me. So, I'm not sure.
Okay. It's, like I said, it's not a big deal. It just caught me a little strange that we're repealing three when normally it's just the one from previous. So, it's not a big deal. Anyway.
I think, I think this last one was for five years. Before that, they were only like a year or so, or two. So, maybe that's part of the reason.
Okay.
Well, I got just a clarification, if I could ask. I was just reading this and it says a fifteen thousand eight eighty-five, within number two, the base fee will be due three equal payments each year. So, are we saying that's five grand each payment, I guess?
Yes.
Because I'm just picture, I'm understanding it right?
Well, the, the swim team gets their funds throughout the year. So, we made it so that their payments were throughout the year. So, they didn't have to put it all down right up front at the beginning of the season.
Okay. So, fifteen thousand eight eighty-five is the total for the year, and that's going to be ongoing until, like, changed?
They pay it. Well, yeah.
Or is it all one year?
They're paying it increments to get there.
Have to renew every year of this contract or?
This is a five-year contract.
Five years. So, this will be this amount for every year?
Each year is fifteen thousand.
Okay, for five years.
For five years. And then they'll come to us again.
So, we don't have any increases at all or anything?
Didn't you say you already did the increase?
I didn't do an increase for the, their fee. We haven't raised our other fees in the last five years. So, I didn't see why we should raise it for one group and not the other groups.
Okay. Any other questions for Eric?
I think your minimum wage will probably be above that in five years, eighteen an hour, the rate that Oregon's raising it. I'm just curious. But do you got, do they provide their lifeguards or do, their own lifeguards or?
The city provides the lifeguards.
Okay. So, what I'm saying, well, that the thing, my, my, I guess my concern is, I don't know if this is an overwhelming concern, is that in five years or the fifth year, there's a good chance that the, even the minimum wage for lifeguard and the stuff will be up above because it's close to fifteen an hour right now, and it's supposed to go up with inflation. And I'm just wondering, well, usually most five-year contracts have built-in increases to cover the whole five years. That's my guess.
Good point. Thank you. Yes, Councilor Patton.
I think for me, one of the things that I see this as is, you know, we talk about supporting various groups within the community and we provide various grants and stuff, and keeping it consistent for these folks to be able to operate. And then if we may eat a little of the cost on the back end, it's more of the city providing a service to that group that's, that is partnering with us. That's, that, I, I am not particularly worried about the, the cost of inflation when it comes to, to this. Now, streets, that's a different story. But I'm not, I'm not willing to, to go to the mattresses on this one.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, yeah, it, it's possible that in five years, minimum wage could be over $18 an hour, but it won't be enough to make a huge dent in our budget to cover that difference. So, like Councilor Patton says, we, we do a lot to do grants and things for other organizations. So, this is kind of a unforeseen possible grant, if you will.
The pool is mainly funded through the five-year levy. And our fees in general are lower than other pools, but our pool is funded in a different way than most other pools. And we're, we're, we're not trying to gouge anybody. We want to make the swimming pool available for everyone. It's, it's more of a service than it is trying to make money. So, we're here to serve the people.
And if I may, just jog my memory, how far are we into the last, the latest five-year?
It goes to 2027.
Twenty twenty-seven, okay.
June 2027.
Okay.
Okay. I, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with that. I just, whenever I see, the accountant me says, okay, what are the cost increase? Whenever you see a five-year fixed lease, that's just sort of a, usually means that either you way overcharge the first year to do that, or you're going to lose money in that on the fifth year. So, but I, I think, but if you, we put it that way, that we're just contributing a little bit to the, to the, to the swim, you know, swim center, then I guess we can look at it that way. I'm okay with that.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Councilor Patton.
I'd like to move. I move to approve resolution number thirteen ninety-six, a resolution adopting an agreement between the city of Canby and the Canby Swim Club Incorporated, and repealing resolutions eleven forty-seven, eleven sixty, and twelve ninety-six.
Second. Thank you. It's, motion's been made by Councilor Patton and seconded by Councilor Sterns to approve resolution number one three nine six, a resolution adopting an interagency agreement between the city of Canby and the Canby Swim Club Incorporated, and repealing resolutions one one four seven, one one six zero, and one two nine six. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's four zero. Thank you. Finally, thank you, Eric. Finally, we have a resolution number one three nine seven. Eileen?
So, this is a resolution that would be, extend the time period on the utility billing statements to the twentieth day of the month. And Ruth is here for this item. This is Ruth Reyes. You don't see her very often.
We don't see Ruth very much.
Welcome.
Hello, Ruth.
Making her first presentation to the city council, and I'm sure she'll do just fine. So.
Thanks.
We're not that scary, I hope.
You're not.
Okay, good. What do you have for us?
Um, okay. So, I, let me read off of this. The need to extend this sewer street and park maintenance statements due date was brought to attention by multiple residents and staff as we need time to close out the billing cycles to then send to our printing partners. So, that takes some time to close, and then like forty-two business hours from our printing partners to deliver to the mailing service, which then takes like two to three business days to finally get to residents. This has not been very effective because of, due to a lot of reasons. Sometimes the first of the month falls like a, on a Friday, on a weekend, a holiday. We've had various errors with our previous printing partners. So, we have new printing partners. So, it's a five short day extension that we are requesting. It's not, it would not make an impact, fiscally not make an impact. The five days would grant us printing and delivery period. So, the residents would have that ten to fifteen-day period to take care of their statements.
So, we're extending the timeline, which I think is entirely appropriate to do to be more, just to give our, our residents a, a little bit longer time to pay their utility bill.
More of a buffer.
More of a buffer, yes.
And to clarify for those watching, we're talking about the sewer utility, not Canby Utility Board, correct?
That's correct.
Not Canby Utility.
Just so people watching know that we're not talking about your electric and your water. We're talking about your sewer. Okay. Any other questions for Ruth or Eileen?
For those who are on automated billing, will they still come in on the fifteenth or will they all change to the twentieth at that, at that time?
It would not affect it if we left it on the fifteenth. If it is requested by customers to change on the twentieth, we can still only do that.
So, it won't be automatic. So, those who are already automatically paying on the fifteenth will still continue on the fifteenth unless they go in and fill out more paperwork.
The fifteenth is something we do, like a manual fifteenth, but it's always requested by customers. Well, not always, but by a lot of customers, a different date, even past the fifteenth. So, I guess to answer your question, we can move them to the twentieth. We wouldn't try to change them if it isn't requested by customers because it would be a lot of work.
And they're already used to paying it then. It's all automated.
Yes, I just want to make sure that the effect is understood.
Yeah, they have the option. Yeah, okay. Councilor Davis, did you have a question? I saw your hand go.
Make a motion?
Oh, certainly.
I move to approve resolution thirteen ninety-seven, a resolution extending the time period on Canby on utility billing statements to the twentieth day of the month.
I'll second it. Thank you. Motion's been made by Councilor Davis and seconded by Councilor Sterns to approve a resolution one three nine seven, a resolution extending the time period on utility billing statements to the twentieth day of the month. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes four zero.
Thank you very much for coming in tonight.
Thank you, Ruth.
Very good.
Okay. It brings us to old business. Do we have any updates on the city administrator recruitment since the last meeting? I don't think we do. See, no? Okay. Yeah, interviews are coming soon. That's all we can share right now. Names have not been released in the paper yet, I don't think, right? Okay. So, you know everything we can say. Mayor's business. The mayor is at home. I will go with council comments and liaison reports. We'll start with Councilor Sterns tonight.
I haven't met with any of the, one of the liaison. But I did want to bring up something I talked about earlier about, kind of up from the last work session meeting, because of a byproduct of my mind. But, and what I was wanting to bring out is that when I was reading the, the water plant, I did notice that the fourth and fir water tank had been unused or been idle since 2016. And what I, and again, it's my accountant brain and stuff goes through, is I'm wondering how many properties.
Put your mic on.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Maya.
What I'm wondering is how many properties the city has that are idle like that. And if, and I would, it would be nice to have a discussion in the future on the city council to determine what to do with idle properties to make them not idle, either to make them not idle as far as being useful for the city, or make them not idle by turning them over to the, you know, private sector. And I just think that I don't like to see idle assets. So, I'm just wondering if that's something that the council would be interested in exploring in the future about, you know, making sure that all the assets that the city has have either a good use or a use planned. And my understanding is that the fourth and first is hasn't just, it's just a big hunk of metal sitting on a, on a lot that gets, the city has to pay to mow every so often. So, I don't know if that's something that we could.
Personally, I think that would be a great discussion.
It may not be, that may be the only property. That's just the one that was brought aware of reading this. But I would be curious to know if there's other properties likewise that have outlived their usefulness or no longer use or no plan to use, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah. And council, I felt that this was a significant enough workload item that I wanted the whole council to kind of weigh in on this direction rather than it being, you know, this is not a fifteen-minute kind of exercise. It's more, you know, it's going to take some time. So, I want to make sure that the whole council is interested in staff working on this so that we know that it's, you know, it's an important, it's, it's a council priority.
I would agree with Councilor Sterns that we'd need to know what our inventory is and what our, you know, return on investment is. And if, if we have some idle properties that have no usefulness to the city, then consider selling them back to the private sector for development. Councilor Patton, do you have thoughts?
Um, yeah, I would be fine with learning more about this. I think it might be something for, you know, months out rather than, you know, weeks, something maybe mid-year to the end of next year.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of irons in the fire. I think it will be interesting, once all that list comes out, of just how many oddball properties the city owns. I seem to remember when I was on council years ago that the city bought like two triangle-shaped chunks of property that could probably fit in this room over by like the, the wetland area over by Redwood Terrace Apartments because it was like abandoned property and we bought it for, for like the tax thing. So, yeah, I think you'll be surprised at how many weird little pieces of property that we could, you know, follow Portland and run for the smallest city park in the world or something like that, and, and make a name for ourself that way.
That's not a big rush, but I think it's something that should be addressed that for, for, because we're talking about building a new building. I know the funds don't exactly, you know, match together, but we're a new building and we have an old building that's not doing anything. And obviously, it's not one-to-one, but I do like the idea of exploring, monetizing unused stuff, maybe to find, to fund some of this building that we're thinking about doing in the future at least.
She's head nodding here. You're in agreement as well?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you.
Let's put it on the docket. We can talk later about timing and whatnot. So, thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Mr. Sterns, anything else for your liaison report?
That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Davis?
Okay. We'll start with the Park and Rec since that was fresh from last night. And I appreciate the city administrator and staff providing some updates for me going into that meeting. We had a very lively meeting. We actually had some guests attend last night. We welcome people to attend the Park and Rec committee meeting. So, we appreciate their attendance at the meeting. There was some discussion around Auburn Farms in regards to the design work. This is up by Dodge Farm and Auburn Farms. You'll recall, I reported on that before. We have a, a rough draft. We received the input from the Park and Rec Committee, came back to the city, and the city administrator has moved forward a public meeting for that, hopefully on November the ninth, I believe is the date now, for the public meeting, which will hold here and receive further input. The Park and Rec Committee will work with staff to get door hangers out in the neighborhoods, similar to what we did with Maple Street Park, so that we can get the best attendance that we can so that we can receive that. The firm will be there. HHPR will be their representative to hear the input from the Citizens Committee or the citizens' input on that. So, I think we're getting very close to kicking it into final design after we have that public meeting. So, thank you, Eileen, for putting that together.
You're welcome.
The Legacy Outdoor Exercise, we received a report from the Parks and from our Public Works Director as far as the layout for the exercise court. It looks really good. And so, they will be moving forward with the slab installation. The vendor will need to install the exercise equipment so that we maintain the warranty for the exercise equipment. And then we had some discussion around the art for the wall behind the exercise equipment. And, you know, we came up with, in regards to the, what we wanted on the wall, hopefully it is protected enough that if there's any graffiti or anything like that, it's easily washed off so that we don't have to continue to replace the design on that wall by the exercise equipment. And Maple Street Park, the personal service agreement, or the, you know, the personal service agreement with Field Turf was sent in for signature. Once it's been received by the city, it will be signed. The, we had discussion around when we should actually start the work on that. And it was determined unanimously by our committee, by the committee anyway, that we hold off. But we have, this time, we have everything in place so that when we hit July one, that we're ready to start construction because that's what our goal was this last year. But we got hung up, various reasons, wasn't ready. But we can save up to $70,000 by not trying to do this in the wintertime. And we could be causing some damage as well to the outfield by trying to do it in the wintertime as well. So, I guess I was tasked with making sure that this was ready to go. And they could start moving earth on July first, right, Jerry?
Okay.
So, we will make sure that that's ready to go. In regards to Cogeo, everybody, again, understands that Cogeo for the sports field complex, how important this is for the city of Canby and for the Chamber of Commerce and for the businesses by trying to get some, some, some athletic fields built somewhere in the city. Patrick Sampson, who did a, made a presentation to the city council, I've been in conversation with Patrick as of today again. I also talked to Jamie Stickle and the planning. We're going to hopefully have a meeting on Monday at 1:00 PM here at City Hall so that we can meet with Patrick. And, and the city wants to move forward with providing some coordination, management, working with Patrick. I can tell you that in my discussions with Cogeo, which I hope does not happen, that we're in direct competition with two other communities of potentially losing this sports complex, which would be a huge hit and loss of revenue for our downtown businesses. As it's been stated in here, you know, on weekends when we have tournaments in town, restaurants' revenues go up, you know, thirty-five to forty percent. And so, we have to do what we can to show that the city of Canby is very interested in making these sports fields happen. And ideally, I think that we want to have an avenue of people being able to come into Canby so that it's not too far out, that they don't come back to Canby, so that we can provide that to our businesses. As well as, I've received quite a bit of input from families. As the gentleman came to our last council meeting, just one person talking about that they've got to go to outlining elementary schools to have practice for soccer, and they have no fields to actually practice before games. And I think that that just shows the population increase and that we do have a number of younger, some families that need sports field complexes. So, anyway, we'll continue to work with that. I appreciate city staff and setting up that, the meeting with Cogeo so that we can show that we have an interest of building those athletic fields. So, that is, that's it. Essentially, we had some discussion also around some memorial benches, which the Parks Department. uh, which, uh, the Parks Department, uh, presented, uh, some options for, uh, if people wanted to put up a memorial bench or a tree in memory of somebody. Um, and so, uh, Public Works did come back with some prices, uh, and presented that. And we're going to have further discussion at future, uh, Park and Rec Committee meetings, uh, for that as well. So that concludes the Park and Rec. Uh, nothing really to report from the fire, uh, at this point other than, uh, the fire district, like all other businesses, are, uh, having difficulties with recruitment. Our last test, uh, for firefighter paramedic, we came up with three, uh, that we sent to civil service and they were hired the next day, uh, by Canby and Mulalla Fire. And so we are actively recruiting again for firefighters, firefighter medics, firefighter EMTs and interns, uh, so that we can meet the demand of, uh, the future needs, uh, for the fire department. So, uh, we're hard at work, uh, with that as well. Uh, nothing from the citizens, uh, from the, uh, Canby Adult Center at this point other than Eileen and I continue to meet with Kathy up at the adult center.
And how's that project planning going?
Um, Kathy, uh, is the director at the Canby Adult Center, is working to get a campaign manager to move forward, similar to the, um, Community Center, uh, Ray Keen, what Ray Keen did in trying to start, uh, securing additional funding for the remodel up there. And as you'll recall, uh, with the ARPA funding, we, uh, obligated five hundred thousand dollars. And that's primarily for the city's responsibilities for that building, uh, the exterior of the building and, uh, heating, ventilation, those type of things, windows. And then Kathy, uh, is working on the design, uh, for that as well and the cost estimates on that. So her project is moving along real well.
Good, thank you for your update. For mine, the, um, Traffic Safety Commission met last week and, um, had again, a very robust conversation. Um, a couple of citizen complaints were being addressed, a lot of speeding going on. So just public service announcement, folks, slow down out there, you're upsetting the neighbors. Um, and we're got Spencer moving the little traffic monitor around town. So we'll have some more data to work on at the next meeting and more decisions will be made at that point. French Prairie, I, I did attend the French Prairie Forum's Zoom meeting this afternoon. They had an ODOT presentation regarding tolling again, and it is still a project moving forward. I'll be at a little slower than it was. Um, I have to be honest, I, I still don't hear a lot of answers from them yet regarding the diversion. The only answer we get is we're looking at it. So they're supposed to have a letter to, uh, Governor Kotak's office sometime in December regarding that information. So maybe by the end of the year, we'll have a little more answers as to what they plan to do to, um, avoid the diversion traffic, but I don't know what that could be. Also, Clackamas County Coordinated Committee, C four, another ODOT conversation regarding STEP funding. That's the State Transportation Improvement Program. There's a lot of question marks regarding that whole plan as to how long funding will be available. So that was a very, um, upsetting conversation, had a few of us riled up. So, um, stay tuned for more on that as we continue to talk with ODOT regarding those funds. And there was also some more discussion regarding some work being done on Sunset Corridor, um, from county work. And that, I think, is all for my liaison assignments. But I did want to, as a public service, remind everybody that everybody thinks about October as being the breast cancer awareness month and everybody wears pink, but you might see some folks wearing purple. And that's because it's also domestic awareness, uh, domestic violence awareness month. And I wanted to let folks know that Clackamas Women's Services has a place called The Safe Place. It's a wonderful resource for women who need help. And they are currently doing an online auction for, um, part of their fundraising this month. So you can go to their website and perhaps purchase something and, uh, your money will go to a good cause. And I also wanted to shed light on a organization that's right here under our nose. A local woman who lives here right in Canby, um, has for a decade been the executive director and founder of an organization called, uh, called Living Waters of Hope. And they're a faith-based ministry and their mission is to restore hope and dignity to women who have been impacted by domestic abuse and equip others to do the same if they find themselves in that situation. So I encourage anyone who might need those kinds of services to just get out your computer and look up Living Waters of Hope. And Diane would be wonderful help for you and resource and point you and, uh, some right directions. And if nothing else, just sit there and listen to you and pray for you. So I wanted to let you know about those resources and don't stay silent. You can survive this. That's all I have. Counselor Patton?
Excellent, thank you. Um, so unfortunately, I have been neglect in my duties to some of my groups. As some of you know and some of you may not, I moonlight as a volleyball official this time of year. And so I'm effectively working three or four jobs at the moment. So needless to say, my evenings have been, uh, filled with being yelled at by coaches and players. Parents and getting hit in the head with a ball. So it is what it is. Uh, but I did, I hope you don't mind, I attended the Willamette Falls Landing Heritage Commission.
Thank you.
Uh, meeting and, uh, some of the things that they've got going on is they have designated that in two thousand and twenty-five is when they are going to go to the federal legislature for, uh, declaring a section of Willamette Falls as a national, uh, heritage site. And that is a huge undertaking. It's amazing how big of an undertaking it really is. So, um, as I get closer to that, I'm, I'm looking forward to being a, being a part of moving that legislating, legislation forward. Um, we got a tour of the old Westland City Hall, which the group owns. And they are going to be, they finally have gotten some parking stuff sorted out and they've gotten some di- designs work done and they're going to start working on renovating that building as the, um, as a museum. And then it's also going to house all of the photos. So if you have an interest in purchasing historic photos of the area, you can go on their website and they're going to be at some craft fairs throughout the area this year, uh, or this, this winter, selling cards and such. So if you, uh, are so inclined to send out Christmas cards of historic photos, the group would greatly appreciate that. Uh, it was very interesting, the old Westland City Hall is a very interesting building. The downstairs is quite chopped up and then upstairs used to be the court. And there's actually some very beautiful architecture up there that I'm hoping they can, uh, can salvage, uh, through the, through the project. So, uh, the last thing I just want to close out in is, per usual, a comment that I made at the last city council meeting caused some consternation, and so I want to address that. It was, my statement was not directed towards city staff or members of this community. And I will just go through what I had said that evening. And this is, I went back through and I listened to it, and this is what I had said. Some context, we were talking about future funding for the city. And there were members of the council that were, uh, taken back or, uh, surprised with some of the fact that these numbers were coming out and that they were coming out in, uh, what many considered a delayed fashion. And so what I said was, there was a question about us, the council, not seeing this information, uh, and stuff. And I would just use, I would just use what we are going through as a cautionary tale to this council and councils that will come before us. I used the wrong terminology there. This is what happens when you burn everything to the ground. When you burn things to the ground and you have a mass exodus of city leadership, these are the cracks that then open up, that things fall through. And I think COVID had a big play in this because there was a lot of stuff that went on throughout that. But it is just something for folks to keep in mind going forward. Later, uh, because I had noticed that there was some raised eyebrows, I said that I reiterated, well, actually, I recalled the story about my fourth grade teacher and the sign that was on her, on her chalkboard. Uh, and then I said, uh, then made it clear that I was not directing that statement towards anybody specifically. I was using it in general terms. So again, I will reiterate, I do not think that the situation that the city currently finds itself in was caused by city staff or the community. When there is a monumental failure, when, that this city has, has lived through, the fault lies at the feet of the people that are on this dais. And I would lie to you if I did not tell you that when I made that statement, there were certain faces and certain members of the previous council and the current council that flashed in my mind. I will not name names, but I am hoping that we, as this new council and as a new city leadership staff, when that is built out and the current staff can all come together and implement policies and procedures that will prevent these things from happening in the future. Because if we allow future councils or those folks that want to influence the process in a negative way to use this and the, the same processes in the future, then we have learned nothing. And that is where, plus, I was a little fired up that night about some other stuff. So I just again, want to make it clear that I was not directing my statement at anybody in particular or especially city staff or members of this community. And if I caused some discontent and some, some consternation over that, again, I apologize. So that is that.
Inter- city administrator business and staff reports?
Uh, I have a couple of items, um, Madam Chair. First of all, goal setting, uh, some of you have responded that you are available for February sixteenth. Um, not all, um, have, have responded yet. So, um, if you could check your calendars and let me know that that works for you, great.
I didn't respond to the email, but didn't I tell you, Maya? Okay, thank you.
I got it on my calendar.
You do, great, okay, okay. That's one item. Um, oh, um, the second item is, where did I put that? I mentioned this last meeting, but I just wanted to provide a little bit more detail on the, um, the postcard that is going to be going out on the U G B expansion. So I just wanted to provide a little bit more, as I said, context on that. So city staff will be hosting a, a listening session for those property owners outside of the Canby urban growth boundary on undesignated land, not rural reserve land within one mile of the current Canby urban growth boundary. Listening session will be November sixth from six to eight P M., um, at the city council chambers. Property owners will receive a postcard, which will include a description, um, a map of the area for possible inclusion into the city's U G B. And we'll also identify the November fourteenth Community Summit from six to eight P M. at the Canby Police Station. The November fourteenth Community Summit will include table group exercises to come up with different scenarios for addressing forecasted residential unemployment growth based on the adopted economic opportunity analysis and draft housing needs analysis. So again, just wanted to put that, um, uh, make the community aware that those postcards will be coming out and that those are, those are key dates that are coming up. In addition to that, on November first, for your work session, Dawn will be back to give the council, um, a, a more thorough discussion of where we're at with the U G B expansion process. So, um, you can look forward to that. And, um, tomorrow, tomorrow, um, at four o'clock is the plaque dedication for the DeMiro Award that, um, Mary Hanlon received. So, um, there's a couple of us on staff going. Hopefully the council will, uh, attend as well if you can. So that's all I have, yeah.
Thank you.
Council president, excuse me.
Yeah. Or as Tim Dell would always call it, the vice mayor. All right, thank you, Eileen. Uh, this is the second opportunity for citizen input. I don't see any other attendees on the list. Did we, our friend disappear? Okay, and do we have any yellow cards that came up? Seeing none, there's, nobody wants to talk to us? Okay, action review.
You have approved the consent agenda, adopted ordinances number one six one two and one six one three, approved ordinance number one six one four to a second reading on November first, two thousand and twenty-three, and approved resolutions number one three nine six and one three nine seven.
Okay. All right, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All right, it's a non-debatable motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Good night, Canby.